So, as we talk about the adoption of the agenda, would you please go over it, Jennifer?
Yes, we just have one change that we're going to move from the consent agenda because of adjustment to our personnel recommendation, so we're going to move that to under the business agenda, to just go over that with you. Mr. McFarlane, we'll do a quick review of that when we get there.
Okay.
Otherwise, we are good to go.
Okay. So, the one other thing before we get started here is Steve Love. We'd like you to come up, please.
So, am I supposed to take it out of the pack? What is it?
Well, it says that in appreciation to Steve Love, Chairman, Board of Directors for 2015 to 2017, for your dedication and service to the children and patrons of Polk County School, District 13.
Thank you. And I don't have to give a speech or anything?
That and a quarter, you might get us on. Okay, so student reports. We don't have a student report, do we? Nobody? Or power pairs? Do we have any public comment cards?
No.
No public comment cards? Do we have a CAA report? Okay. Denise, you're up. You're the only one here. You want to say anything?
I think it says none.
And that would mean...
Tap dance, but it's ugly.
All right. Well, we figured we'd at least try and put you on the spot. You brought three people with you.
They won't be tap dancing either.
Okay, so how about we talk about administrative reports, then? And so the first thing we get to?
Summer programming.
Is our program. Our summer program.
And with us tonight, that's going to share information, is Ms. Vickery, in charge of Prickham Instruction, and one of our instructional coaches, Angelica Gloria.
Well, good evening. We're excited to give a brief overview of summer programs. We started our planning clear back in January, and looking at the funding that we had. My new saying under ESSA that some of you have heard is blend and braid. We now have some more flexibility. We had Title III money available for our second language learners, some money through Title I-A, and then in a conversation with the ESD, we offered to serve our migrant ed students as a priority, and so we received funding through migrant education, and then we had some money through transformation. So, we were able to take that and start looking at staffing and what we wanted to do. So, again, this is just a summary of each of the programs. There were pockets of children that we served that we felt like, okay, this is where we really need, that we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck, and at the same time, when we invited the students, migrant education, we went with migrant ed first because of the funding, and then our English language learners, then monitor students, then other students as space allowed. Magic School Bus was a program at Central High School. Students going on field trips with a physical science focus. We had about 25 students, migrant ed and English language learners. And then two very large programs that ran at the same time. Summer Science, grades three through five, and then grades six through eight, each of those five weeks long. And the summer science for the elementary was about 65 students, and then about 80 students at Talmadge Middle School. Both of those programs ran with the solar system theme, with the eclipse, so the students have had all kinds of fun activities, and I'll let Angelica go into a little bit more detail in a minute here. And then Polk County approached us with, hey, if we have the staffing, can you guys help us with doing a jumpstart program with our incoming kinders, and then going into first and second grade? So, we did a jumpstart program, still going on, nine days, just focused on some pre-K skills, and just it's more of a focus of how do you do school, and some fun hands-on activities, and about 25 students. Very shortly, in the month of August, there will be a transition to CHS. We have 12 emerging English learners, newcomers, as eighth graders coming into Central High, and we have some staff that are going to be working with those students on just getting acquainted with Central High, and locker, and schedule, and just working on some conversational English in that time period. So, with all of these programs, we've been able to serve about 225 students, and I must say, the infrastructure of summer programs is a school within a school. And I handed off to Angelica as program coordinator, and she's just done a masterful job of orchestrating, troubleshooting. With the rise in temperature last week, a very quick decision was made to move the programs out of Independence Elementary, second floor, to this building, because we do not have air conditioning over there, and we didn't want them to melt. So, she put the team together, and on Sunday, they moved all three classrooms over here. And it was pretty amazing, and after three weeks of instruction, how much stuff the classrooms had accumulated. But all the visuals for the solar system, everything came with, and we just, we made it work. And DO staff, the district office, team, very, very flexible in having children in the building this week. It's been kind of a change for all of us.
And let me add, they did it flawlessly. You wouldn't even imagine how in less than 24 hours, how they managed that, and we were moving, and kids were having class and having activities here, as well as the district office keeping moving forward with, as we get ready for the school year. So, it was flawless.
And those two, those programs will end this Friday, and I think we're kind of looking forward to that. So, you want to go in depth on the rest?
We continued with System 44 at the middle school, just like how we had started in the spring, but we also offered it this time to our elementary students as an intervention program, to see if it would work as well, and we're seeing gains using the program in our third and fourth graders. Alongside that, along with all these programs, we also have had GLAD training for secondary and our new hires at the elementary, and that's currently happening this week, so keeping everyone trained. We also have a team of teachers ready to become gladiators, so train the trainer model, and they will be trained on Friday, this Friday, as gladiators, so we can continue the momentum and implementation of GLAD. Alongside with all these programs, the partnerships that we created this summer, I have to say are probably, have had the biggest impact in building relationships, especially with the city of Independence. We partnered with the Independence Library and the Community Services Consortium. It originally started as STEM, and then they changed the name to Stream. Science, technology, reading, engineering, they included art and math. So, our students actually stayed until four o'clock this past week, and really had those hands-on experiences with what came, the Maker...
The Makerspace.
The Makerspace came, they did a whole science fair, so we've really integrated the sciences this summer, and I think that's been the motivator for kids to keep coming. The parent connection piece, we continued our home visit literacy program. We now increased that to four nights a week. We go to Blue Heron and visit our migrant families and read to them for an hour and a half, and that's been successful. Last year, we had about 10 families there. This year, we have about 25 kids up there that need that literacy support. So, we didn't have enough volunteers, actually, this year. So, that's been a real positive for us. Our bilingual scholars have continued to support our program. They are the rock to the success of this. They keep learning. We now have scholars in their third year at Western, so they are participating, they're at both Talmadge and at the elementary, and are gaining that experience being in the classroom. That's it. Do you have any questions?
For those of us that have summertime memories, can you refresh my memory on what System 44 is?
So, System 44 is, it's a reading intervention program. It really is based on phonics, so the students, it's the pre-reading skills. We originally had Read 180 at the buildings, but it didn't go low enough. We needed a reading program that was below fourth grade reading level for our middle school kids. We have 163 middle schoolers going, entering into middle school this year, reading below a fourth grade level, and so we needed an intensive reading program to target those needs. So, just, it's phonics. It's your basic literacy skills. It's an online program, so it develops the independent skills, high interest books, the kids don't know they're reading at a low level, the books are very engaging.
If you remember from some of the work we did last year around transformation, House Bill 3499, System 44 is part of that action plan. So, we looked at the pocket of students that we have the greatest need, and what emerged in the spring was at Talmadge. We're using transformation money as well to hire a reading teacher for Talmadge to continue the program. So, by the time we got everybody trained with two days of training and up and running at Talmadge, we had about four weeks of really good instruction. And then we wanted that to continue throughout the summer, so we wouldn't lose that ground. So, same students kept right on going, and I, we're starting to see some really, really good results, because it specifically targets what the student needs. It's very, very intentional, very diagnostic, and exactly, are they missing these sounds? Then it works on those sounds. Wear headphones, it's speaking, listening, reading, and writing English.
Did you pick up some of the incoming sixth graders?
They're all in System 44.
Awesome.
So, we got a really great head start, and then the ones already in the program, they're just continuing, and we're seeing like 75-point growth, 100-point growth in like styles.
And that's huge gains in four weeks.
As that is. Their engagement, they're motivated, that self-esteem.
And we made the decision to go ahead and roll the grades, so it's going, the students at Talmadge are this year's, coming year's, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So, those fifth graders got a jumpstart on five weeks at Talmadge. Any other questions?
Just a clarification, I wasn't sure I understood when you said, you work with the county on the jumpstart? What was their role? I wasn't...
This is Polk County.
It was Brendemo.
So, they had resources available?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
He had interns, you know, by this time. One of the struggles with summer programs is staffing. You know, you've got to have the teachers that are motivated, classified support staff, clerical. We worked with food service, transportation, technology, you've got to have all that together. And we're like, okay, this is the pocket we're not serving, and he came, if I've got the staff, you guys help us with getting us the names, some of the materials. And I think it worked out really well.
I thought you were saying he asked if we had the staff, and I was trying to figure...
No, he brought the interns, which helped.
Okay. Well, it was more than that.
Okay.
So, we had 65 kids at the high school that came to our summer school. The model, however, was very open. We use an online program called Odyssey Ware, and it is an option for kids who failed a class, in a classroom, but they can retake it online to get credit, and/or they can take electives online for Odyssey Ware. Huge number of classes. So, we offered it two to three days a week, depending upon the schedule, and we had, we had about 100 say that they were interested. 65 came, and I studied and did their work. They could do all their work at home, but they have to come to school to take the proctor test, or they can do all their work at school and take the proctor test. It was, it's really a blessing for a lot of kids, especially those ones that sort of come to their senses their junior year. Oh, wait, I need 24 and a half credits to graduate. I really better do something about this, so.
Yes.
Thank you. You're welcome.
That's one of those programs that just are like, oh, we're doing this? Oh.
We're all Little Island.
Okay, so moving on to Avid. Last spring, we talked about Measure 98 and the funding coming through. The funding came through, and we made a decision that we were going to go with implementation of Avid for eighth, ninth, and 10th grade. Summer Institute, so what Avid offers every summer are different trainings throughout, and we ended up with 18 of us going to Denver for a three-day summer institute. My role in this was just coordinating it, and I am now wearing the hat of Avid District Director, and I'm going to let these two talk more about the model itself, but my job is really to support the implementation, support the Avid elective teacher, observe, coach up, and then my role is also to submit our data and our action plans for both schools. What does, what does Avid stand for, Mr. LaBounty?
Wow, did you give her a segue?
I did, but I thought somebody would ask. I just thought maybe no one's heard of it.
We should know at least once in our lifetimes, right?
So, Avid stands for Advancement via Individual Determination, and I have been a slow drip in Dory's ear for the last few years about Avid, and Avid is not a program. While it is a system, a system designed to close the achievement gap and prepare every student for college and career readiness, for me, Avid is a changing, it is a changing culture, not just for students, but for the school itself. It really prepares students to know how to succeed, to look at hopes and dreams and possibilities, and gives them the skills and support to get there. What Avid does is it prepares our staff from district level down to teacher level on how to teach using proven instructional practices, practices that bring students to higher-order thinking skills, problem-solving, discourse, collaboration, leadership. It provides them with the support to reach that, provides them with the peer culture. It makes a difference in kids' lives, and that's the bottom line. I've had the opportunity to take some of my staff to demonstration sites in Salem. I have heard students there, I've heard students from across other states, and to a student, it makes a difference in their lives. You see kids whose dreams are opened up, they believe in themselves, they see their potential, and they know they have the skills now to get that, and they've been supported by this, and this changes the school's culture. Right now, we're starting with eighth, ninth, and 10th. I am not shy in saying that we will have sixth and seventh added, we will be school-wide in a short number of time, we will be a demonstration site in this district. We want to make a difference in our kids' lives. This opens the door for every single one of our students. Sorry, soapbox.
It's true.
It's perfect. One of the things I appreciated about the trip is really to getting to know the secondary teachers, and this was a core group, fabulous. When you're with like-minded individuals who are so excited to open the possibilities, and I didn't know that much about Avid until we started preparing for this trip, and literally the online resources, I had what's called launches and boosts, and I had videos to watch that was referred to as the launch, to get me ready for the Summer Institute as a director, and then now I have online learning that I need to continue to do throughout the year, as well as continual regional training. But the idea of, you're looking, the Avid student, even though it permeates through the entire school culture, the Avid student are these kids that maybe don't believe in themselves, don't see the possibility of college being a chance, that they would have a chance at going to college. They might be the first in their family to ever look at, hey, I could go to college. But it's really a school-wide wraparound program that would take those kids and open those doors. But that process of opening that up for our students, it changes the whole culture, as Perry was saying. So, we're pretty excited about the implementation of this. We have two awesome site teams ready to go, and I think the training went very, very well. They are super excited about the strategies, ready to jump into the work. You want to share a little bit about the strategies?
Yeah, I also want to emphasize that there will be a new and renewed partnership between Talmadge Middle School and Central High School. I have great respect for Perry, have known him for a very long time. I hope that's mutual. We, our teams are going to be working together. We have development times for both teams where we'll come together and collaborate, touch base, make sure we're following the Avid structures and protocols, but I want to emphasize again what Perry said, it's a system, it's not a program. And that system is designed to help, help everybody in this school in sort of a trickle-through effect, because we have the core group of Avid kids. Now, at the high school, we have a freshman class and a sophomore class, and those students were recruited, their parents are part of this, and so they know they're getting into a very intensive academic program. The way that it trickles through is we have what are called Avid content teachers. So, I, for my group, I took my Avid teacher, who will be TJ Bailey, is called the Avid Elective. It's where the kids in that class learn all of the processes and techniques involved in being a truly extraordinary student. Then there are the Avid content teachers. I have an Avid content teacher in English, in science, and in math. The kids that are in the elective, the Avid elective class are then make sure that they are scheduled into the classes of these teachers. Now, it's not that they're all tracked into one class, but for instance, you know, I might have a teacher that's doing three sections of Algebra I. Well, if that teacher is the Avid content teacher, then of those three classes, the Avid kids would be spread there. So, then what happens is, the Avid content teacher uses the Avid techniques that we learned about, the pedagogy, and it spreads organically. It's, in fact, I met with two teachers this afternoon, they're like, I need to do that in my classroom. So, I just want to touch on one thing that you may be interested in, it's called WICER, and it's, it stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organisation, and Reading, five critical things for a person to succeed in life after high school. So, as you look at this, you'll see that WICER has a specialized note-taking called Cornell Notes, and at some time, if Jen would let us, we would love to teach you guys how to do Cornell Notes, because it's, it's pretty amazing. So, there are very specific things that we work on under WICER, but they are all, are, we're all trained in how to do this, and you notice it's not just reading, for instance, it's being able to use a graphic organizer to summarize, and you know what reciprocal teaching is? Have you ever heard of that technique? Well, it's where a student teaches the concept. It's, you know, the saying that you don't know something until you teach it, you know, that's one of the techniques. So, WICER is a foundational component of Avid.
So, these are some of the things that TJ will be teaching them?
TJ will be teaching that, TJ will be teaching all of this.
How does it start at Talmadge? Same idea?
It's the same format. We have an Avid elective, and this is voluntary. I, well, my counselor, who is my Avid counselor, Mrs. Watkins and myself, we, we met with a group of 50 students who were, teachers kind of selected who they thought might be interested, and pitched it to them, and I've got a waiting list. I mean, I filled the class of 32, and I have a waiting list of other kids who would like to be in it. But in the elective, they're teaching specific strategies, the organizational piece to all the kids, within the content areas, and I took all my upgrade features because I want all our kids to have access to us and always ask. So, they are teaching some of the skills and strategies throughout those classes, so all of the kids will, there will be a trival effect on everyone. That specific elected class, those kids are going to be pretty intensive, and there's a lot of accountability. There's accountability for students, because part of that developing that determination is learning that I'm accountable for these things in this, there's a lot of accountability on our parts. Teacher's part, there's accountability check, on my part, Dory's part, we have a checklist that we go through, and we are inspected.
We are. We can't stay in Avid school if we don't do it right. We can't, we can't do that.
You know, I think the, again, the bottom line is, this has a drastic impact on kids, and Dory will share the Avid site with you, and I encourage you to look at the videos of the student speakers. You know, they, they, they move you of what it did in their lives, and they are kids just like every kid we have in our schools. It changes their lives and gives them opportunities. It opens that doors, possibilities for them, that some of them don't know how to dream, and we want to give that, the skills to make those dreams happen.
And the beauty of this partnership is that those eighth graders that he's with this year, get them a year from now as freshmen at the high school, already in the Avid format, already knowing about it, and continuing on with the Avid elective all the way through high school. So, it's, it's very systemic. There are districts that have Avid K-12, but we're starting, we're starting slowly, we're going to do it properly, and it's very exciting. It really is.
So, at the, at the Talmadge level, the core is the 32 class, the class of 32?
It's called the Avid elective.
Okay, right.
But all my teachers, all my core academic teachers have received training, and so those skills, those higher-order thinking skills and strategies will be delivered top to all of our students.
And then how many kids are in the class at the high school?
Around 25.
25, okay. So, somewhere, we're starting with a core of 60 kids, and then...
I could have actually created a second freshman class, but it got to be logistically really different. So, I do, I have a waiting list in both classes.
And then is the model that if I'm one of the Avid students in elective in the eighth grade, that I will be in that elective as freshman, sophomore, junior?
If you choose.
Okay, so you can go in and out of it?
It is, it's still a choice. We heard a young man who was in Avid all through middle school, he decided he wanted to do something else in ninth grade, quickly found out he needed that support, and went right back into Avid. It makes a difference, but the choice is still with, with the students and their families.
And it's interesting, because it's not like a tutor session, it's not like a study help, you know, helping with your math. This is how to think, how to get along with people, and the Avid teacher does make sure the kids are doing their work properly, but it's not like when you go for regular tutoring. The whole tutoring thing is different.
It is, it is college prep in its finest, and not, not many people are, but college prep. I'm teaching, we're teaching kids to be thinkers and critical analyzers and problem solvers and in discourse and collaboration. It pushes them. If you walk into classes using new strategies, you won't see the teacher at the front of the room. You'll see small groups of students engaged in Socratic seminars and...
Philosophical chairs.
Philosophical chairs, and tutoring each other, you know, looking at a point of confusion and explaining it. It's, it's pretty impressive, the level it pushes the kids, it gives them the support for them to get there, but it's, it's beautiful to see it work.
And the kids that we've chosen, or that have, that we've selected and they've chosen to do it, is that a wide range of students, or is that students that are more at risk?
Avid, Avid has a...
Does it have a line?
Yes, it kind of got a line. It's kind of kids in the middle, kids who have been fairly academic successful, but they may struggle with some of the support and organization. Kids who may not have, they may be a first generation who is considering attending college or thinking about that, so they don't have that example, and so they, they want you to target these kids who are kind of underrepresented, kind of in the middle, who may need that support. But truly, Avid's, you know, the push is that this is school-wide.
Right.
That these are, that these skills pour out across the entire building and district.
And they will, you know, done well, they will. And it's, it's not a program initially for a child who has chronic attendance problems or serious behavior issues. Ideally, that would be taken care of as it moves through the system. But Avid has a recommendation for the type of student, but leaves the choice up to the school.
And once we get this up and running...
And once we get this up and running, this, because of Measure 98 and the lack of knowing what the funding was, it was really very much last minute. And we were down to the wire of having an application process for students. So, come next year, it's really the student choice. You know, teachers can, can encourage and all that, but it's, it's really up to the student to want to be in there.
Could you take about 30 seconds and describe a Socratic seminar? I'm thinking of Socrates, who was a troublemaker who ended up getting poisoned.
The way that, there are several ways to do a Socratic seminar. But the way that we were treated at Avid is that there's an inner circle, and they can, you will express an opinion. It's not a time for arguing. It's a time for expressing an opinion. Another student is standing behind you as a coach, where you can confer with your coach. It's, it's a way of having a very deep discussion without any argument and pulling out of really thoughtful probing kinds of things. So, I might say to Jerry, "I wonder why Iron 55 has such strange isotopes."
Says the Socrates teacher.
And if, if, if you were my coach, I might turn around to you and say, "Could you tell me what Iron 55 is?" And, and then another student, you know, would respond about, "Well, I believe, you know, X, Y, or Z." It's, it's a way for them to learn to talk to each other without saying, "No, you're wrong." It, it, it's fascinating to, to watch. We watched a Socratic circle. Was it on the math problem? Didn't we watch that?
That was a tutorial session.
Okay. What was the Socratic circle we watched, do you remember?
No.
Anyway, it's, it's philosophizing.
And generally, the teacher's not really involved in that, right?
No, no.
No. This has got, this is gra, you, you might have heard us talk about gradual release from, from teacher delivering instruction to students, delivering. This is gradual release at its finest. And Perry talks about this is going to push our students. This is going to push our staff. You know, I'm pretty excited about the level of professional development in these high-impact strategies. They align with GLAD beautifully. I, I'm really, really excited for the teaching at the, at both schools. And I think this is really going to elevate the conversation within PLCs of the strategies and what's working and what they're doing. And they are going to teach each other. Our trained content teachers are really excited about getting back to their PLC to tell them about their training. And I've gone to conferences for 25 years, and I've never had a conference where I had videos I had to watch before I went. I have videos to watch after the conference. And like I told the team, this is the first time we are ever at something where we were going to turn around and right away use it, all of it. And we were all assigned to different strands. My strand was all on being an Avid district director. That was it. So, I don't know about the strands that, that they did or the content-level teachers. It was very specific to their role into what they are going to do in the overall plan. It was pretty exciting that we, you know, how we came together and debriefed and are ready to go.
I will tell you, as the new superintendent on my 23rd day, it's been great to watch because, as she said, the gradual release, we talked about the Danielson framework, which is our, you know, instructional framework. And you, and then we talked about alignment, how we're going to use, you know, we have GLAD, that is a fantastic model. Now having Avid aligns great with PBIS as well. And so, as we continue to really look at this system and, and do that, just these pieces that, as the new superintendent coming in and some of the great things that are already starting to be established here, is just going to continue to allow us to move forward in the right direction. So, that is very exciting and how we move forward with that alignment together.
Is there a short answer to where did Avid come from? Or should I go to the website?
It started in an individual's classroom.
Yeah. Okay.
It was, it was one teacher making a difference. She's now on their board, but it's one teacher's made a difference, and it grows. It grew from that to now serves over 1.5 million students and is almost in every state, but it's international. It is, it is truly a system that grows in that, as teachers see the effectiveness in kids engaged, they'll embrace it.
Chair the director? Chair the director?
Oh, the executive director of Avid is Sandy Husk. Left Salem Kaiser as superintendent and went to be the, down in San Diego. She did speak at, they only had one general session.
Yeah.
And she was very short and to the point, but they had three speakers. One was a teacher who went through Avid as a student and went back to her high school to specifically be the Avid elective teacher. And the other two were students. A very powerful message, and then Sandy closed it out.
And our regional rep?
Our regional rep is Melissa Cole, another former. Sandy Husk took everybody from Salem Kaiser. So, we know these people. And then our other regional support person is a-
Talmadge teacher, Bridget Welbin. Probably been working with us directly.
So, we have some, so we have some great connections.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to Cease.
Thank you. In your-
Another pile of papers.
Another pile of papers in your packet. Tonight, we're three reports. I'll briefly mention the summary financial report. There is no actual financial report included because we've been busy closing out the 2016-17 books for the auditors. And in the midst of doing that, sort of my right-hand accounting person, Trista Gert, was recruited for and offered and accepted a job at the Dallas School District. So, she has, she stayed on to help us kind of get through the year-end close, but she has gone. We are recruiting for her replacement at this time. And then I also included the quarterly risk analysis. I won't go into detail on that. If you have questions, be sure and ask me. And my last report, I, I will deviate from the script a bit. I told you a bit about our new transportation manager, Brian Winchester, who is coming to us directly from Brookings Harbor, indirectly from Portland Public Schools, actually. And further back than that, from a career as a naval officer. And he is moving to town and sort of back and forth between here and Brookings Harbor, actually, for the rest of the month. They've, he's an integral part of their management team there, so we're kind of releasing him off and on. And you can read about our new food service director, but better than that, I would like to introduce you. So, just forget my canned part. Alex Singer, if you wouldn't mind coming up and telling folks a little bit about yourself.
Good evening.
No pressure.
My name is Alex Singer. I've come in here most recently from the Yakima School District, then Union Gap School District, in Washington State. I've been in school food service since 2001. And I'm just really excited to plant some roots here and help our district grow.
Alex is also moving in. I, I provided not only employment to these two gentlemen, but relocation services, trying to help them find housing in our neighborhood, which was not, Alex was pretty easy. Brian was bringing two dogs, four motorcycles, and so that was a little bit more of a chore. But Alex is getting settled in and has been meeting folks and was able to attend some meetings on Friday, but today's his first official day. So, just wanted a chance to introduce you. We did have a couple of folks from food service on the interview panel, and they were thrilled that somebody like Alex would be interested. We owe a great debt of gratitude to the food service director of Oregon Trail School District, who pushed him to come and emailed me like every three days. I'm telling you, he's the best guy ever. Really appreciate that. And Alex will be getting a chance on Thursday to work with Mike Vetter a little bit and kind of go back and transition. But they both have a background of working for Sodexo, so they come from a similar system. And we're just really super excited. It's going to be-
Welcome, Alex.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yep. Thank you for coming by.
Oh, thank you.
That concludes my report.
So, that great big pile of papers you don't have to hand?
No, that's my work. I'm trying to work. Get things cleaned up. My desk, it's not for you.
I'm surprised we're not getting-
You're going to hand that to me?
And then I get to hand it to you.
And what's wrong with having four motorcycles?
Nothing. You try and find a rental in town, however.
And that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, we are all very thankful right now for Cease and Julie in helping all three of us find places. So, we are, we are all, I move in next week to a place. I know these, those two are in the process of moving in, so we're, you know, everybody's starting to get their, their roots down here. So, we're very excited. I'm very excited to have both of them on board as I went through the interviews. I was excited, as I've shared with you all, I've, I was excited to come to this team. Adding these two with, with the team members that are already here is just, we're, we're moving in the right direction and, and excited for this, my first year here. I just wanted to give a quick, I have almost been here a month. Thursday is actually the official, I've been here a full month within the school district outside of my transition period during the spring. So, just wanted to share a couple highlights that, that I've had the opportunity to, to do over the last month. Starting first, the first week I, I did get here, we did attend the OSB summer camp for school boards, both Director Mann, as well as Director Wall, and our new lovely board secretary, Ms. Escobar. We all attended that two-day retreat, and it was fantastic. I think it was a great opportunity for us to get to know each other a little bit more and then just learning for all of us as we went through that. So, I was very appreciative to, to be able to do that. The summer school, I've had the opportunity to go out and see it in full action. It's just been very exciting to see it. I went to the middle school on one of my first days, and they were doing coding. I know, I'll be honest, I have little knowledge about coding, and so it was very fun to watch them. They were talking about how you were to land satellites on to different places or move them. And watching middle school kids explain that was pretty amazing and how they go about that coding process. Within that same visit at the middle school with the summer programming, they, they were building rockets or in the process of building rockets as part of the summer school plan. But the best part of it is they were working in teams, and there was a project manager, the lead engineer, and the financial manager. So, they're all having to learn how to work together. And I leaned down to a couple, because a couple of the students were saying, "Oh, I'm the project manager, I'm the boss." And I leaned down and said, "Now, remember, the boss has to listen a lot." And just having those fun conversations with students and their interactions with them and watching them do work together has been pretty, pretty amazing over the last couple weeks. Elementary, as they, as they shared, the eclipse and the solar system has been the focus. To watch this past week on Friday, where they're in the hallways within, within these halls, to watch the kids be able to explain and what they built and how much they cost. Some kids built machines that were $6 billion. And I, I clearly asked, "Six billion?" And one young gentleman said, "Yes, based on my research from NASA, that's cheap." And I said, "Okay. Good to know." So, again, just the knowledge and the fun that the, the students were having. Again, tied to the stream, so you saw not only models of these devices, but then boards with pictures and explanations. So, again, tying back into the stream of the science, technology, reading, arts, and maths, really putting all of that together. And it was great to see just the partnership, not only with our staff, but with the City of Independence, as well as the Community Service Consortium, that having in this, this room and, and down the hallways, just watching kids and adults work together as, as they went through that was, was fun. I got to sit in on my first Oregon Department of Education audit with the migrant ed summer program. Again, through that, that was through our consortium with Willamette ESD. It was all positive. It was really fun to see and watch the interaction between ODE and, and our students and then walking through our classrooms within the summer programs. I also had the opportunity to go visit the migrant families in our community through the extended summer programming and, and really to get an opportunity to sit with students and do a little reading and math instruction as we went up to Blue Heron. So, that was a, a great opportunity for me to really get involved with the community and, and see some of the things that we continue to move forward with our students. It was great because we did that not only with our bilingual scholars, but we have our central teachers and volunteers that are, that are going up there three to four days a week to, to continue that programming with, within our school systems. And I thank Dory and her team for really leading and guiding that this summer. I, and what's been great, I've had the opportunity so far, you know, to meet with union leadership in the district. I have been meeting with community members. That includes, I'm, I've met with the independent city manager and some of his staff. I'm, I'm meeting with the Monmouth city manager here in a couple weeks. I've met with several of our current partners. Still have meetings coming up, local businesses. I actually meet with one of our representatives next week, both police chiefs. Part of that's because of, I want to get to know them, but there's a big event coming called the Eclipse that I'm just wanting to have, make sure everything's in good shape for how we work and, and those pieces, as well as several meetings come up with the Western Oregon affiliate. So, it's just been exciting to, to get out into the community, not only with our district leadership here in meetings, but within community members as, as well. And then this last week, we spent, the last three days of last week, I had a two-day retreat with our district administration and our principals, and then on Friday with all of our district building administration and our supervisory employees. So, we spent three days just in a leadership retreat. And it truly has been focused on deepening our learning and relationships with one another, right? I really want to build a fantastic team with our leadership team, beginning to identify and build clear communication channels, which is one of, of the pieces that I heard clearly as I came in on my interview and, and onboarding process. How do we actively initiate strong leadership connections with one another, which we started some of that groundwork over the last three days with, with the team? And then how do we, how are we really beginning to align and create a high-functioning leadership team within the school district? And it was fun. I'm not going to lie. We did some fun activities. There may have been a scavenger hunt across several communities of Independence, Monmouth and Western Oregon, that we did during those times. But then we also did some activities that really pushed our thinking and comfort and support of students, staff, families, and the community. So, I am, I am blessed. Again, I keep saying, there's this gem of a school district called Central that I get to be a part of now and serve, and really started to establish some of those key pieces this last week with our, with our leadership team, not only in the district, but within the buildings. So, that's a little bit of what I've been doing in this first month. Couple things for just beginning your activities, we will, over the next few weeks, we have a lot of professional development and training going on as, and Helica's, excuse me, as Helica said, we've got GLAD training going on over the next few weeks. I know we've got some special education, professional development starting up. I also know in the next few weeks, our new hires, both in our licensed and classified staff, will be going through some training as we hit the, the beginning of the, the school year. I keep telling people, I'm actually excited for school to start. I know that there's still a few months, a few months, weeks left of vacation, so I'm, I'm reminding people, I'm trying not to push time away, but I have never been so excited to actually have both the teachers, all of our staff, and the students back in the buildings looking forward to a good year. And speaking of that, and you'll get a formal invite, but just as a reminder, we are going to do our welcoming back breakfast, which will happen on August 29th at Central High School. It will begin at 7:30 and shouldn't be, but we're thinking no more than an hour and a half total because breakfast is starting and then our programming will be after that. But you guys will get, I would like as many of you that can be there. But please know I will also get a formal invite out to you, so you have it on your calendars as well. And that is my report at this point. Let me go. Last two pieces. The registration?
Yeah.
Yeah. We are just confirming with both the middle school and high school of what those registration dates are. We'll get them up on the websites, on the district website. I know, I believe they're on both of their websites as well. And then again, everybody was back on August 1st. So, it has been fun to see, this building has been quiet. It is quiet no more, and that's been exciting for me as we start into the, to the new school year.
All right. So, it comes down to the board report. And so, upcoming board activities, we have a board retreat scheduled for the Saturday at the- We have a board retreat scheduled for this Saturday at the Infinite Civic Center. And our next board meeting is on September 11th at 6:30. And I'm going to turn it over to you to talk about the retreat agenda. And everybody's got this beautiful...
So you can just take this for a second, because guess what? Just like I did with our administrative team, you have pre-work to do before Saturday. So inside... Huh? I can't say that the WICER process isn't going to be part of our training or approaches on this Saturday. So just inside, you have a short agenda. Both myself, Mr. Mosier, Board Director Mosier, and Board Director Love have met. And we just drafted initial agenda, so you'll see there some of the key things that we will do. I'm not going to go into much detail with that because I want to just talk about, if you flip to the second, this yellow, this is a board self-evaluation. I need you to take some time and bring, and take some time to complete this and put your name on it and bring it with you. There is going to be some activity that we're going to do with this. So it's important that you take the time before this weekend to do, at a minimum, this sheet. It is very important as we process moving forward into Saturday. The next, the next section is going to be focusing on our board superintendent protocols. And so there are some questions there, as well as, I'm giving you a couple of different examples. What I would like you to do, if you have time, please, is to look at these questions and just use this as a review. And are there key things that resonate for you as a board member in how we move forward? And some of, all of this is written in instruction on the agenda, as I gave you instructions on the agenda at the bottom, so we can begin to do some of this work together. And then that last section is specifically focused on board protocol. So your operating protocols as you guys work together. So I just gave you a couple of different examples to do. Take a highlighter. There's this thing in Avid of highlighting texts for understanding and having and writing questions next to it. So as you see things that resonate with you in those, I would advise you to highlight it. And then we'll be able to have more in-depth conversation at our retreat on Saturday. So do not hesitate to, if you have questions, email me or call me. I am around and at your service all this week as we prepare for our Saturday retreat. So a little homework, or pre-work, I like to call it.
For those of us that like to procrastinate, how much time should we put into this?
I, that's up to you.
I try.
I would ask that you probably spend at least, probably a half an hour, forty-five minutes on the evaluation, the yellow sheets. That's an important piece as we start to move forward in where we are. And again, part of this is baseline data, right? What are we really doing well? What are the areas that we may need to shore up as a board in our relationship, obviously in our protocols and how we work, to really start to establish what are the values that we truly believe in and moving towards those goals and things as we move through that, through the, through our initial first year together? Questions for me about that?
So if you happen to hang on to this and don't hang on to this, you might make a little note that the meeting starts at nine because it's not written on yet.
I will get that out. You will get a, you will get a nice email reminder this week.
Okay. So with that, we are down to the consent. And so we start with the routine approval of the minutes of the July 7th, 2017 board meeting. That will be approved of that.
July 7th or 10th?
Pardon me?
July 7th or 10th? July 10th.
July 10th.
Okay.
Did I say 7th?
7th, 10th.
I said July 2017. July of 17.
Second.
Yeah. Okay. So a motion on the floor by Jerry to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Dawn. All those in favor, raise your left hands.
That's not legal.
It's not legal?
You actually have to raise your right hand, unless it's you I.
Okay. I did not know that. So it'd be different. So, and then after we approve the minutes, we're down to the business agenda. We have none, but we've got personal recommendations that Rich is going to go over.
Chairman, members of the board, last month, you may recall that we had to make an adjustment. As of that evening, we had a teacher that we had intended to formally hire at this board, previous board meeting, and she, that afternoon notified us that she'd taken another job in McMinnville. Well, I'm glad to tell you that we have hired a teacher for that position. So that's one of the names that are on the consent agenda, our personnel recommendation. We also added our English teacher at the high school. And what I would say with both of these positions is even though they came late, I've been assured by the staff at both buildings in the hiring process that they got stellar candidates. This has been the summer of interviewing. We have interviewed and interviewed and interviewed multiple times for our food service and transportation manager. And what I would say is we have been patient and we have waited to find the best fit. And we believe we have found superior candidates by doing so. I wish I could tell you that we were done, but unfortunately, as I was sitting down tonight, my colleague next to me let me know that we likely have another opening, another teacher that has a late hire to McMinnville. I wish I could say that this will be an easy position to fill and that we could fill it rapidly. I don't know if we can, as it is in the special ed area, and that has proven to be a more challenging positions to fill. And it takes sometimes some recruitment and some time to find the right fit. So we'll let you know. We may be holding this employee to start the year.
Have a right to do so.
Yes.
So with that, we need a motion to approve the recommendation from the HR folks. So move, move by Dawn.
Second.
Second by Jerry. All those in favor, raise their right hand.
Motion passed.
I don't have a question about those hires, but just a kind of an update. How many positions do we have open right now? We've got one for her staff.
For licensed staff, we have, we have one. We have one in the supervisory confidential staff, and we have several in our classified staff. That's not unusual with our classified staff to have openings periodically throughout the year. It's more unusual with, with our licensed staff. We're anticipating now with this new one that we probably will have about sixteen new licensed hires this year, which is a little more than half of what we had last year. So, but lots of interviewing in the process.
So we're down to comments by individual board members.
I have an opportunity to present, kind of in line with Avid. One of the things that the gate collaborates with Central High School on is tutoring, our mentoring program to mentor high school students to help them on their college and career path. And we are currently recruiting tutors for that. So if any of you would be interested in meeting with a high school senior once or twice a week, kind of depending on their schedule, and helping them figure out what a FAFSA is and how to fill out an application and what to do once you get accepted and those kinds of things, let me know or give Joyce a call.
Very cool. Any other comments? I just want to say that it's exciting to see everything starting to get ready for the first day of school. It's always interesting to see that, you know, we just, you know, I said this to Jennifer earlier this month when I was meeting with Steve. You know, we just got done, and now we're starting all over again. And every time is just, you know, one step, one step cooler that all the stuff that we're going to get done. So with that, we have no executive session planned for tonight. And with that, Perry, nothing else? We are adjourned.